Okay, you can start now.
I have a chair if we could just have a little call. Clark Harper?
Here.
David Henry?
Here.
Joe Katniss?
Here.
Jeff Crum?
Here.
Carly Nivauer?
Here.
Yosefa Rojas?
Here.
Linda Hunter?
Yes.
Suzanne Moudle?
Here.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Olivo, do you know how many parking permits are being given up as part of this application?
I believe it's two per unit.
Two per unit?
Yes.
Okay.
So it'll be 104. Parking permits will be relinquished or forfeited by the property owner.
That's all I have for Mr. Olivo. And Mr. Hughes? Mr. Hughes, the height of this building is not comparable with the height of the homes on Main Street. Is that correct?
Just in terms of the Main Street properties, I'm not aware of any building that's 40 feet but or 30, 5.56. I'm not aware of any buildings off the top of my head that are taller than that structure.
In fact, most are two stories, correct?
Two to three stories, two and a half.
Now, as part of your testimony, did you also look at the proximity of the bus routes and the parking ramps and the train station? Was that part of your analysis?
It was.
Okay. The bus routes are a half mile away, are they not?
I don't know the exact distance, but I would say it's a five to 10 minute walk from the site.
And the nearest parking ramp, do you know how far a walk that might be?
Parking ramp?
Yes, parking ramp.
In a garage?
In a garage.
The nearest garage, off the top of my head, would be the gateway deck, which is rather close, two to three blocks away, again, five to 10 minute walk. The other potential parking location, in terms of parking structures, would be the Wellness Center Deck, which, again, is also a five to 10 minute walk from the site.
And the train station, how far away is that from the site?
Again, a five to 10 minute walk.
So something's ten, a 10 minute walk away that's proximally located to justify the RSIS requirements?
Yes, that's part of the analysis.
And you think a 10 minute walk justifies that requirement?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes, the property question, what zone is it located in? Is it IN or RE5?
As we heard from Mr. Patterson, I believe in October, as part of the adoption of this redevelopment plan, this particular property was rezoned to IN1.
And I had asked a question of Mr. Olivo that I was not permitted to get an answer for regarding... You're familiar with the Municipal Land use law standards in Section 2?
The purposes of the municipal land use law?
Correct. And you would agree with me that one of those purposes does not include the financial liability of the project?
I would agree.
Now, in order to get an exception to the RSIS requirements, isn't one of the things that we look at in planning the concept of undue hardship?
That is one of the things you look at, whether it's a waiver exception or a variance. In this case, I put in extensive testimony under a C2 justification for a C variance for relief from the parking standard provided in the redevelopment plan.
Okay, and again, on the undue hardship on the RSIS estimate, would that undue hardship have a similar connotation with the undue hardship that we're familiar with in a C1 scenario?
It may, a C1 scenario, but again, I do not justify this variance on the basis of a C1 justification or C2.
So is your testimony then that the RSIS standard of undue hardship is not supported, you know, by this application?
No, again, looking at this as a professional planner, I provided justification under Municipal Land Use Law under a C2 justification for relief from the parking requirement. In addition, the city will be seeking a waiver from the RSIS standard, which, as we know, there's been extensive testimony that the state through RSIS provides municipalities with, quote, "great flexibility" based on the particular characteristics of the property, local transportation infrastructure, anticipated residents of the project, and other factors.
There are 21 trees that are required to be planted by the ordinance as part of this application, correct?
I do not know the true requirement off the top of my head.
Okay, are you aware that the developer wants to make a donation instead of planting no trees?
Yes.
Okay, and, you know, one of the reasons for that, isn't it the fact that there's no room to put the trees on this property if it's developed as proposed?
Well, since it's being developed compliant with the redevelopment plan, there is certain trees that we cannot accommodate on-site, so we'll be providing a contribution of the City Tree Fund as the city permits us to do.
But wouldn't you agree with me, sir, that it's better planning to plant the trees and reduce the intensity of the proposal?
No.
Did you or anyone connected with your firm conduct a historic analysis of this property?
Define historic analysis.
Did you do an analysis of whether or not this property has any historic aspects that would prevent development of this site?
Other than reviewing the letter that was submitted as part of the record, I believe in October, no, I have not.
Under the existing conditions, can you tell me what the FIR ratios?
Existing conditions meaning structures currently on the property, what the FIR is?
That's correct.
As indicated on our site plan, it is 0.3 to 1.
Okay, so 2 point, you're in excess of a 2 to 1. Is that, that's obviously an increase over what's present existing, correct?
Yes.
And it's not improvement from a planning perspective, correct?
Oh, I think it is an improvement from a planning perspective. We're building in accordance with all of the objectives, the planning vision for not just this site, but the greater College Avenue area, and we're complying with all the bulk requirements of the College Avenue Redevelopment Plan, which was adopted by the governing body, reviewed by this board, and has been in place for several years.
Under the existing conditions, what is the previous coverage?
As indicated on the site plan, it is 45%.
And proposed, the proposed conditions, it's, what, 65%?
It says 85%.
85%, excuse me. So that's not an improvement either, correct?
Again, it is an improvement because we are developing the property in accordance with the redevelopment plan. Building out a property in this location with the infrastructure in place that can support this density is smart growth, it's good planning, and it's consistent with the principles of this redevelopment plan.
Now, it's your testimony that the fourth floor was stepped back from Main Street, correct?
Correct.
That's the only floor that was stepped back, correct?
Correct, and that's not required under the plan.
Now, did your firm prepare any new, you know, shadow study?
No.
Thus, as you sit here today, you cannot testify as to whether or not stepping back the fourth floor has no change to the impact of light air and open space on 15 Main Street?
Stepping back the fourth floor of this building certainly would provide benefits in terms of light air and open space on surrounding properties, there's no question.
Now, as part of your testimony today, you reviewed the master plan, correct?
I did.
The zoning ordinance?
Yes.
The redevelopment plan?
Yes.
Anything else that you reviewed?
Did you say zoning ordinance?
I did.
Okay. As I indicated in my testimony, also based on my involvement and review of other similar types of multifamily housing developments in this particular area that are, I would say, oriented to students, also related to those.
And did you look at the RSIS standards as well?
I did.
Okay. Anything else that you can think of that you...
Off the top of my head, I can't think of anything, but it's possible that there's some other documents I reviewed.
Now, the redevelopment plan, do you have that in front of you right now?
I do.
Okay. Can you look at Section 8 for me, please?
I'm sorry, Section 8?
Section 8.
Can you give me a page reference?
You had to ask a tough question, didn't you?
It's Section 8, page 38.
Okay. Now, in Section 8 of the redevelopment plan, that requires the applicant to obtain any legally required zoning changes from the zoning board, correct? If any of the variance requests goes to the zoning board, right?
I'm sorry, you're gonna have to direct me to the specific reference. The first sentence, "The public agency and private corporations responsible for carrying out this plan will obtain from City Council Planning Board and/or zoning board of adjustment any and all approvals necessary or required in connection with this plan." Seems to indicate that the applicant should appear before the planning board to the extent that waivers or variance relief are necessary, which are recognizable by the planning board, i.e. a C variance, which is what's requested here.
So it's your testimony that there is no use warrants required?
There is no use warrants required as part of this application.
Would you agree with me that the proposed use would not be permitted in the RE5 zone?
Well, first of all, that's irrelevant because, number one, the redevelopment plan supersedes the underlying zoning, and number two, this property is, as I stated earlier, now located in the IN1 zone. But again, the redevelopment plan supersedes.
Well, this is not, I'll try to get to it this way. This proposed use, it's not a detached single-family dwelling, correct?
This is not a detached single-family dwelling.
And it's not a two-family?
No.
棟， correct? And it's not a private nonprofit school, correct?
No.
And it's not a community residence, correct?
No, it is not.
Okay. And it doesn't involve the conversion of an existing habitable floor area in a two-family home? Because you're tearing this down, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So it's your opinion that the RE5 zone requirements were superseded by this redevelopment plan, is that right?
I just answered the question. It's IN1 is the underlying zoning. This redevelopment plan supersedes the underlying zoning. Very clear in the redevelopment plan.
Isn't it a fact, sir, that all apartment buildings in the IN1 zone must be university-owned apartments and classroom buildings?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay, there's certainly classrooms that are part of this development, correct?
That's irrelevant because this redevelopment plan provides a list of permitted uses that supersedes the list of permitted uses in the IN1.
This building's a university-owned, correct?
No.
Private-owned, correct?
Correct.
And you would agree that the ordinance requires over double the number of parking spaces that your application's proposing, correct?
The ordinance is basically tied to the RSIS standard. We provided extensive testimony in this regard about in October. There was testimony that oftentimes as planners, we feel that, again, we're sort of tied to RSIS standards even when they may not be appropriate for a particular given use, only because those are proposed by the state. And again, the state gives municipalities, just for that reason, great flexibility to allow relief from those standards when they're not appropriate for a particular use in a particular location.
You're proposing 43 spaces, correct?
That's correct.
And the RSIS standard is 96 for this development, correct?
That's correct.
And that's not even half, correct?
Again, the RSIS provides great flexibility for municipalities to grant relief from those standards.
Wouldn't you agree, Mr. Hughes, that it's really more of a self-imposed hardship by the applicant, the fact that you don't need the requirement?
No, I completely disagree. And as I put in during my presentation in October, this is a very clear C2 justification for parking requirement variance in that we articulated a number of variants, or a number of benefits, a number of purposes in Municipal Land Use Law that would be advanced by allowing this reduced parking requirement, 43 spaces, which we feel is adequate, given the proposed use of this site.
But there is no better zoning alternative specific to parking for this project when it's double requirement, correct?
No, I articulated a number of benefits and reasons why this alternative is superior to over-parking a project in a location that has one of the most wholly developed public infrastructure systems when it comes to transportation that I know of in central New Jersey.
So it's your testimony that it would not be better to reduce the intensity of the project?
What would be best is to accommodate a density on this site that is in alignment with what is contemplated by the redevelopment plan and to provide adequate parking for that use. And that's exactly what is provided as part of this proposed application.
But if you provided parking which was closer, you know, to the performance of the ordinance, wouldn't that be better?
It would not be better. I think in this environment, College Avenue next to the campus, it's very clear where the city is heading in terms of their overall planning objectives here. And that is to try to reduce, because there's strained on-street parking environment in the 6th Ward. There certainly is, there's no question. Part of that's because we have students living in one- and two-family homes that don't have adequate off-street parking. So the last thing you want to do is encourage more car usage, more parking, more students bringing cars to campus, living in the 6th Ward. That just exacerbates an existing situation. The city is trying to head in another direction and strike a balance in terms of accommodating high-quality student housing near campus and providing adequate off-street parking, which nearly all the existing uses, aside from the redevelopment projects that have occurred in the past five to 10 years, do not provide. So those are the benefits.
So there's three out of four floors are over-markets, right?
That's correct.
So that it's fair to say that in those three floors, or maybe not even, first of all, we don't know yet, but, you know, there would be certain situation where the... You've got non-students in that, in those units, correct?
That's a highly theoretical observation. In my experience working on a number of these projects and in consultations, and Mr. Brodero has a wealth of experience running these buildings, it's highly unlikely, although this certainly is open to the market, it is oriented to students, and you tend to attract students here. Is there a possibility that you may get other, you know, older residents, for instance? Yes, but I think that's highly theoretical and very unlikely and certainly not going to create any kind of impact that's substantial or significant from a planning perspective.
But as you sit here today, you don't know that it's a fact, do you?
I just answered the question.
Have you yourself looked at the parking situation on Main Street as part of your testimony?
I've been coming to this area regularly for several years. I'm generally familiar with the parking situation on Main Street.
How about recently?
I drove by before the meeting, see if you...
Okay. If there's overflow parking, where will that go when the underground parking's full?
There will be no overflow parking.
You would agree with me that there are very few spaces available on Main Street during any time of the day or night, correct?
Yeah, I'm generally in the area in the evening, but it's certainly strained. There's a lot of demand for on-street parking on Main Street, there's no question.
So theoretically, overflow parking could go on surrounding streets, which creates more traffic, correct?
I just said there will be no overflow parking.
Absolutely not.
No. Not taking any permits.
Are the surrounding lots in this area all metered or permitted parking for Rutgers?
Lots, you need to be more specific.
In the surrounding area of Main Street, of, you know, College, of Union?
I'm familiar with the parking garages, which I described earlier. Those are certainly metered by hour, by day. In the case of the Wellness Center Deck, by month even. And I am aware of other metered spaces within the 6th Ward.
Sir, is your testimony that being over two times over the ordinance requirement for parking is not a substantial impairment to the Department's zoning ordinance?
That was my testimony.
You would agree with me that the satisfaction of land use goals is relevant to the positive criteria, correct? On the variance requesting?
Satisfaction of land use goals, meaning?
The goals that are set forth in New Jersey statutes annotated 40, 55, the height and 2...
The purposes of Municipal Land Use Law, yes.
Okay. This property is mid-block on Main Street, correct?
It is.
And it's surrounded by single and two-family homes not in planning areas, correct?
I'm sorry, not in what?
Not in a redevelopment area, planning area.
A planning area?
Yeah.
Certainly, this is the only property on this side of Main Street that is located within the College Avenue Redevelopment Plan area.
So it's an island in and to itself, kind of. So when you're discussing the standards of the redevelopment plan, you know, styling is important, setbacks are important, visual impacts are important, would you agree?
Any of the guidelines and standards that are articulated in the redevelopment plan, the specific language of those are important.
So just because an application doesn't have a lot of references, that doesn't mean that necessarily complies with the redevelopment plan, correct?
This project complies with the redevelopment plan with the exception of the parking variance received.
You would agree with me, sir, that the parking variance that is part of this application is not the result of this property's exceptional narrowness?
No.
Or shallowness?
No.
Or shape?
No.
Or exceptional topographic condition?
No, again, I justify the variance on a C2 justification. I clearly did not articulate any of these reasons in support of mine.
So there are basically physical features of this property?
It's a C2 variance.
The properties located at 13 and 15 Main Street, they have more of a front yard setback to Main Street than your proposed structure, correct?
That's my recollection, yes.
And those properties also have more of a rear yard setback than your structure does, don't they?
I would assume so.
And generally speaking, you're, now talking about the other side of Main Street, on the front yard, rear yard setbacks, there are more, those buildings that are on the other side across the street, they have more of a setback on the rear and front yard side as well, don't they?
On the other side of Main Street?
Yes.
Again, off the top of my head, I can't recall the exact setbacks of all the buildings, but, you know, typically we're looking at one- and two-family homes, some of which have been converted to administrative space. They tend to have greater setbacks than that are provided in this redevelopment plan.
So the proposed building is not harmonious, you know, with these buildings from a setback standpoint, right?
From a setback standpoint? This proposal is harmonious and compliant and compatible with the standard in the redevelopment plan.
But I'm talking about the setbacks to the building. Doesn't the redevelopment plan talk about being harmonious with the buildings in the area?
It does.
It does. So from a setback, a purely setback standpoint, it's true, isn't it, that your proposed building is not in a harmonious relationship with the buildings I've discussed? From a setback?
If the setback issue was so important from a neighborhood character point of view, from a design standpoint, the governing body would have adopted a redevelopment plan that mandated a setback within the front yard that mimics the surrounding properties. They did not. Instead, they provided some guidelines to encourage applicants to improve the design of their building, to make it more pedestrian-oriented, and to make it more harmonious and compatible with the surrounding environment to the extent possible.
Again, from a set, purely setback standpoint, is your building harmonious with the buildings in the area?
You just asked me if the front yard setbacks on 13 and 15 were the same as the setback in this building. The answer is no.
And I also asked you about the buildings on the other side, and you said no.
Right.
So they're not harmonious from a setback standpoint?
Right, but we're compliant with the redevelopment plan.
You're not providing any buffering in terms of shade trees or anything of that nature to 15 Main Street, are you?
I would, no, we're not in this case. We are providing a fence, as stated earlier. And from a planning standpoint, providing extensive buffering, I think, would be of greater concern if there was a surface parking lot behind this building. But one of the great benefits of the design of this project is the fact that we have enclosed below-grade parking, which pretty much eliminates impacts in terms of glare from headlights, noise just from cars coming in and out and so forth. So the ordinance may anticipate surface parking, the underlying zoning. That's not contemplated here, therefore, there's more flexibility in terms of buffering.
So the redevelopment plan talks about... So the redevelopment plan talks about view preservation, correct, doesn't it?
You're going to have to direct me into a specific reference. I don't recall off the top of my head a specific language about view preservation.
Well, I'll move on. Wouldn't you agree that the New Brunswick Master Plan promotes single-family home ownership in this area?
No, the New Brunswick Master Plan has addressed the issue of student housing because it is a very real issue within the 6th Ward. And they've encouraged student housing on sites that can provide critical mass, you know, roughly 15,000 or 20,000 square feet. In locations such as this, it's actually advocated in the master plan reexamination report. And that was described, it's part of my presentation in October.
Isn't it true that a bulk of a building can be considered to be unharmonious pursuant to the redevelopment plan with the lawful existing structures in the neighborhood?
Can you repeat the question?
The bulk of a building, can that be considered to be unharmonious with the lawful, lawfully existing structures in the neighborhood pursuant to the redevelopment plan?
I would say that the design of the building, it's possible to reach a conclusion that it's not harmonious and not compatible with existing character of the neighborhood.
But bulk is, the bulk of a building is not relevant?
Well, I think there's things that you can do from a design perspective to treat bulk. And again, as I stated earlier with the example of the front yard setback, the governing body has adopted a redevelopment plan which anticipates this type of development. And the purpose of design guidelines are to challenge architects, to challenge applicants, to lighten the feel of the building, use materials that are more harmonious with the surrounding context, and other design techniques. And that's exactly what Mr. Schott has done here.
Would you agree with me, sir, this is the only apartment building on Mine Street?
Well, there's a number of one- and two-family homes existing that have a lot of students residing in them, so they may not be classified as an apartment building per se, but they're certainly functioning as apartment buildings and not providing adequate off-street parking to support that use.
But clearly the density of this proposed application is far more than a one- or two-family home that exists on Mine Street.
I'm not aware of any other 40-unit or higher uses along Mine Street.
On the RIS, the town's allowed to modify the ordinance, correct?
On the what?
The RSIS standards, the town's allowed to modify an ordinance with that provision, correct?
The town has given great flexibility to grant exceptions from the standards, to approve projects that have less than the requirements mandated by RSIS.
The, again, but in terms of the RSIS standards, you agree with me that a town's allowed to modify the ordinance at any time, correct?
The town-
Regarding parking requirements, they could do that at any time, correct?
No, the town, for residential developments, the town is tied to RSIS requirements.
Well, let me ask it this way. In fact, the town did not modify the ordinance, the parking requirements here, did they? I didn't, pardon, defuse it.
In this new redevelopment plan, the parking requirement references the city ordinance, which is tied to RSIS.
Right. And would you agree with me that if a variance is given now by this board, that runs contrary to the town's intent regarding these parking standards?
No.
Would you agree with me, sir, that the ownership or affiliation of properties by Rutgers University or Rutgers students doesn't impact the positive criteria for variance or the negative criteria for variance?
Perhaps for use variance.
But not-
We're not requesting use variance.
Not for this variance, though, correct?
For a parking variance?
Yeah.
I don't see the relevancy.
Okay. And the redevelopment plan, I think you testified to this on direct examination, it emphasizes importance to efficiently using available space on or near campus to develop new higher educational uses and uses supportive of higher education uses, correct?
Exactly.
So having three open market floors, isn't that contrary to that concept in the redevelopment plan?
This project advances that purpose. As I stated earlier, it's clearly a project that is oriented to and supportive of the university-oriented environment in this area. It's a perfect land use in terms of furthering that objective with the plan.
I think you testified regarding the 2012 master plan reexamination report. Am I right?
Yes.
And you were talking about, I think you were talking about page 19. I'll have, you know what, I'll come back to it. You testified that historic regulations have no teeth whatsoever in the city of New Brunswick, correct?
I testified to the letter that was read into the record at the October meeting, which was a certificate of eligibility. None of, this area is not listed on the state or national register. This is a private applicant before this board. The state historic regulations do not apply.
You would agree with me that it is typical for a board such as this to condition any approval on any and all outside approvals such as ship up?
In my experience as a professional planner, I have seen municipal boards condition approvals on other state agency approvals as an example. Yes.
So these regulations do ultimately have some teeth, don't they?
No, they do not.
Is one of the factors that comes into play on the RSIS standards, the availability of off-site parking resources?
That is one of the many factors that are referenced in the statute, the rules.
And in fact, as far as Mine Street's concerned, that availability is nonexistent?
Earlier I described parking resources, including the gateway deck and the Wellness Center Deck, as existing off-street parking resources above and beyond what is being provided on site.
You testified as to a master plan recommendation that there'd be 0.5 spaces per bedroom, is that correct?
I'm looking at the language right here.
Okay.
If student housing is anticipated at a ratio of one onsite space per unit and/or 0.5 spaces per bedroom should be considered.
Okay.
Policy statement.
Great. That was never implemented in the New Brunswick zoning code, correct?
Correct.
You testified that your firm did a redevelopment plan of a mixed-use project in Montclair, is that right?
Yes.
And this application's not a mixed use, correct?
Correct.
And Montclair has a different zoning ordinance, correct, than the city of New Brunswick?
Yes.
And a different master plan?
Yes.
So that's not a really good example here, is it?
Actually, it is, because what I was referring to was an example of creating development standards that anticipate car sharing. And in that case, we put in a standard that was, I believe, six spaces per unit. It's whatever I said at the October meeting, I have notes in front of me, either five or six spaces per car-share vehicle.
And I think, speaking of October, you were referring to a publication for car-sharing university settings. 15.3 personal vehicles for every car-sharing vehicle. Do you recall that testimony?
Yes, I do.
And what publication is that?
Well, it's exactly as I stated in October. It's a journal called Transport Policy. The name of the article is "Car Sharing in a University Setting: Impacts on Vehicle Ownership, Parking Demand, and Mobility in Ithaca, New York."
Can you tell us what universities were studied?
Well, it's Ithaca, New York, so you're welcome to-
Cornell, arguably?
That's in Ithaca, New York.
Okay. So Rutgers was not studied, correct?
Correct. This is a peer-reviewed journal, and the publication date is 2013, so it's very relevant and recent.
Would you agree with me, sir, that just because parking permits may be relinquished, that doesn't mean that someone will park on Mine Street?
Is there going to be a bad apple? Is there going to be someone who thinks they can get away with parking on Mine Street? Yes, there always is. That becomes an enforcement issue of the city. That's not the applicant's responsibility. What we know is that we're providing adequate parking off-street, which is actually quite rare in the 6th Ward and on Mine Street. So we believe that'll have a great benefit in terms of satisfying some of the parking demand.
Are low and mid-rise apartments permitted in this planning area pursuant to the redevelopment plan?
Well, you're looking at the planning area two. Low and mid-rise housing, I believe, is permitted within planning area two.
Okay. And is there a definition of low and mid-rise apartments?
In this redevelopment plan, I do not believe there's a definition.
If it's not defined in the plan, is there a reference to development in accordance with the zoning code?
This plan supersedes the underlying zoning. And in instances where there's, you know, some contradiction or something that's not addressed in the redevelopment plan, the ordinance would apply. But I would certainly challenge anyone to find a licensed professional planner that would argue that this is not low and mid-rise housing.
Are low and mid-rise apartments permitted in the I-N-1 zone?
We've been over this. It's irrelevant. This plan provides a list of permitted uses for Planning Area Two which supersede the I-N-1 zone. It doesn't matter what's permitted in the I-N-1 zone as it relates to this property.
Do you know if there are, if low and mid-rise apartments are permitted in other zones in New Brunswick?
Well, there's certainly a lot of multifamily residential development in New Brunswick, so I assume the answer is yes.
You testified as to, I believe, land use purpose E as part of your satisfaction of the variance in this matter. And you said this was an appropriate density of housing?
Yeah.
The density is not appropriate. One is two times the ordinance standard of parking, isn't it?
No, I basically answered this question earlier. It is appropriate.
Would you agree if the housing that's being proposed was two stories, that land use purpose E might be more appropriate?
No, I think it would be a missed opportunity for the city of New Brunswick to capitalize on redevelopment opportunity close to the historic College Avenue campus, which is exactly why the governing body of the city of New Brunswick adopted a redevelopment plan to encourage this type of development in this location.
And you testified that over-parking the project would really run counter to the vision for College Avenue redevelopment plan?
Right. I gave an extensive answer to this very question earlier this evening.
So not providing enough parking would not run counter to the vision for the College Avenue area?
Again, I already answered this question.
Mr. Hughes, the driveway that's being provided here is not wide enough, correct?
No, that's not correct.
Doesn't the ordinance provide 36 feet width for the driveway?
The ordinance may have a 36-foot requirement, and it's not anticipating this type of development. We have an enclosed parking structure in a location like this for this type of use. Again, I defer to the prior testimony from the engineer and Mr. Olivo. This is sufficient for this use.
So it's your testimony that none of the variance is required for the driveway with 24 versus 36 feet?
There's a parking variance request as far as application. Any relief we need from certain standards that are provided outside of the chapter D ordinance entitled zoning, we'll call those waivers and apply for those if need be.
Okay, so, but if, my understanding, though, is if you're in violation of the zoning ordinance, that's a variance, isn't that correct? It's not a waiver?
From a strict planning standpoint, sort of an objective perspective, if you're seeking relief from a requirement of the zoning ordinance, it's typically done by variance. If it's in the site plan standards, it's a waiver or design exception. However, in my experience, I have seen municipalities sort of take more liberal interpretations, and sometimes there's clearly a section of the zoning ordinance that pertains to site plan standards. It's just a fact that they haven't organized and updated their ordinance over the years, so that sometimes they often do grant waivers from certain requirements that are actually found in the zoning ordinance.
In your trials, you've become familiar with various case law over the time, like mid-eaching cases like that, correct?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the case of Lawler versus Shipham?
I have read it. I don't recall all the content off the top of my head.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. That's all the questions I have at this moment. Mr. Hughes?
I have no redirect. Well, at this time, we're going to adjourn the meeting and reconvene in January. When is the date of our January meeting?
January 13.
January 13.
And that will be put in record with no additional notice or application?
It will be back here in this meeting room. If we have to hold it someplace else, we'll have to do a new notice. But we'll put a notice for the public now that the meeting will be back here in the pre-hold meeting room. 7:30 PM, January 13.